Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting the Germantown Board of Education Order at 7:00 PM, and I ask that you join me in standing if you're able to say the pledge allegiance and for a moment of silence. Thank you. Official meeting notification, Brett?
Yes, public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the GermantownSchools.org website, as well as cable TV Access Channel 96.
Great, thank you. Roll call, Jane. Where is Jane?
She's still out there.
Yeah.
I can do your roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Medved?
Here.
Mr. Rupp, Satterworth?
Here.
Mrs. Larson is present. Ms. Ryanman?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
And board member?
Ray Boarding, absent, excused.
Thank you. Item two, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Item three, citizen comments. When I was just back there about five minutes ago, I didn't see anyone signed up. Did anyone sign up and would like to speak tonight? Okay, moving on to item four.
Bob, I do have one thing.
Yes.
For those watching at home, after the board meeting's over, make sure you head to Roberts for a booster night for youth futures tonight.
There you go. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate that. Item four, approval of the June 22, 2020 Board of Education and June 22, 2020 closed session minutes.
Move to approve the June 22 Board and Closed Session Minutes. Second?
Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Augustine.
Thank you. Item five, reports and updates. Horicon Bank Take Flight Art Contest Award and Donation. Brett?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Satterworth. So we have two representatives from the Horicon State Bank, Rose Petiti and Robert Trailer, and we have Ann Bauer Ruiz from our art department at the high school, and we have the recipient, our student Sam Benzeman, and they would like to present something.
Great. Good evening and welcome.
On behalf of Horicon Bank, we would like to present Sam Benzeman with a check of $500. Out of 250 applicants, he was our Young Artist Award winner.
Beautiful.
Great job, Sam.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
And since Sam was a student at Germantown High School, we would also like to present the art department with a check for $400.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much for doing this, but I do have a question of Sam. It's a wonderful painting you have there, a picture. What is that?
Um, so it's a shoreside with an infant, I would assume, or a child, and then there's two seabirds, and he's kind of mimicking them. He's chasing them. And so it embodies flight and that light airy, like happiness, that I wanted to portray.
Wonderful. Now, where are you gonna, where are you gonna put that?
Um, I had it up in my room, and I don't know if Horicon Bank, they're going to have an exhibit, so I'm assuming they're gonna take it from my hands for a little bit.
Well, that's wonderful. Now-
And they might wanna buy it, yeah.
Okay. Now, you graduated?
Yep, yep.
What are your plans?
Um, I'm gonna go to UW-Milwaukee, and I plan on studying architecture, and that's what I want to major in.
That is cool. Well, you're very talented, and this is wonderful news.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I may just say a word, I wanted to congratulate Sam. He's an amazing artist, person. He's gonna make a great architect. And a huge thank you to Horicon Bank for sponsoring this competition, and of course donating money to our art department. It will be used wisely, and we'll definitely support more creative artists like Sam. So thank you so much.
Thank you again. Appreciate that. Item B, graduation update. And I could give a short update on that. It was a wonderful event this past Friday, in-person graduation that was held under the lights, 7:00 PM on the football field. You couldn't ask for better weather. I just wanna, you know, thank staff, you know, Joel Farron, for having patience and being very flexible with all the ever-changes coming out on COVID-19 and changing the date and so forth. It was a wonderful event. I know a lot of my colleagues here were there, and I'll just open it up. I think it was a wonderful event. Mrs. Larson gave the keynote, did a home run there, and just seeing, like we always do at graduation, seeing the smiles on the boys and the girls when they come up to get their diploma was worth its weight in gold. And I know there's a lot of happy moms and dads out there, so it was a pretty cool event. So thoughts, comments?
I think it was outstanding that Mr. Holmes was able to come back and kinda send these kids off, 'cause they had been under him for, well, the last seven years, you know, since they were going into sixth grade. So it was outstanding for him to be able to be there and wish them luck.
Yep. Amanda, being a new board member, what do you think?
It was the highlight of my school board career so far. It's great, you know? It's great to send the kids off and be a part of that. It was very-
I agree. Sarah?
Well, I think the building committee might like to hear this one. If a sound system ever hits the radar from the building committee, I think the stadium probably could use it.
Not the first we've heard that.
And some would like a scoreboard that has fireworks that launch out of it for these types of occasions. Overall, it was a good evening.
Yeah, it was fun. Bye.
I don't know if that's in the budget. I have one. I may go out of order. It's a text from a friend of a friend. It just said, "Mike, I just got a text telling me the ceremony was shorter than in the past, and it was perfect." Just an FYI. So apparently shortness was a good thing.
Yeah, I know there was, I guess, the last graduation on the football field was many, many, many years ago, and I, for one, have appetite for doing more graduations on the football field. I don't know if staff would wanna do that, because it's more convenient and less risky by doing it in the fieldhouse, but it was a pretty cool event, having all the kids out there in the stands. It was pretty fun, so. But again, Brett, the team did a wonderful job. Joel did a great job, and everyone involved did a wonderful job, so it was pretty cool.
Yeah, and I would add Susan Bass, Julie Cull, that, at least from Joel's words, is orchestrated, those two orchestrated everything, and everyone else was just pawns to make it happen, so.
Yeah, it was pretty fun.
Hats off to the whole group.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to item C, 2020, 2020 Budget Update.
Yeah, thank you. So Brittany's just gonna give a, just a quick update, and some of it might be repetitive from the building committee, but I'll hand it over to Brittany.
Sure. So budget process in day eight. I'm pretty, pretty, not very far with it. But I will be bringing my first budget update to the finance committee on the 27th, so that's when we're gonna get into the more, the detail of this current school year's budget. I did send an email to the board about the estimated state aid, that we have an increase of about 15%, but again, that is an estimate. So we will get our final state aid in October 15th. So we will run budget scenarios based on getting that increase, and then also getting a little less money, just so we're aware of where we might end up. And then finally, CARES dollars. I don't know what update you guys have received on our CARES dollars. The district's approximately getting about $75,000. It is based on our Title I allocation. The private schools do get a small portion of that. We do have to fill out a grant application. The grant application will open up at the end of July, and what we're gonna use those CARES dollars for, so I will be completing that grant application at that time. They said it was gonna open up at the beginning of July, and they moved it to the end of July, so if it gets moved again, I'll let the board know at that time.
Great. Thank you for that update. And I was copied on an email, I know others were within the district today, that we were recipients of a school safety initiative grant that's been approved. Do you know what those dollars are? Any update on that?
I don't know what those dollars are. I don't know if it was our past safety grant, and that the actual claim was just approved, or if it's a new safety grant.
Okay.
I don't know the detail of that one yet.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any further questions, comments on the budget? Okay, moving on to item six, Transportation Committee. Our board chair is absent, excused, but I believe Amanda, you're gonna give an update?
Just a quick little update. The meeting went really well. Right Way and the committee agree that we want to provide a safe bus experience for our students when we start back to school. And we're just starting the process of what that's gonna look like. So from a high level, we wanna make sure that the kids get on the bus. They start with hand sanitizer right away, and their face masks must be worn on the bus. Kindergarteners are gonna be in the front of the bus still, but we will be asking the students, as they come into the bus, to head to the back, so we can fill up back forward to help, you know, stop the kids from passing each other and touching all the seats and everything like that. And same for when they get back on the bus from school. If we can have them line up in the order that the bus would actually stop, get them on that order, so there's less back and forth and passing kids, passing contact. So all in all, we're still trying to figure everything out, but we've got a good start.
Great. And I know I attended that meeting too, and the committee did a wonderful lot, but there's some unknowns out there. Right Way did come in and give a great presentation, and we asked questions relative to high-touch-point cleaning and sanitizing after each run, that type of thing, and that is part of the plan. But right now, it's unknown, from a cost standpoint, who's gonna pay for it. And I think there was some comments that this was at no fault of Right Way.
Right.
So should they have the burden of paying the cost? So I guess we need to stay tuned for what those costs may be, but that is the right thing to do from not only the high-touch-point cleaning, but also the sanitizing as well, or the disinfectant, so. Because we do, to your point, we do wanna make it a safe experience.
Right. And Right Way did state that. Right Away, they would be cleaned after, all high-touch points would be cleaned after every-
Yep.
Every bus route, basically. So they're doing their part.
Yep.
We just have to figure out how it's gonna look like, what it's gonna look like.
Great. Comments, questions?
I got one, Bob. I think, just to be clear on it, our plan is to run the same bus routes as last year, except for where boundary lines have changed. So I think, you know, parents wanna know that. Same bus routes, and we're, we don't know, we're expecting that some parents may not want their students riding on the bus with all the other students, so they may choose to drive and drop off their student themselves. You know, we won't know that until school starts.
Yep. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item seven, Ad-Hoc Curriculum Committee. Brian?
Yes, we did meet earlier this evening, and we discussed a couple of topics. The first one was the return to school and how that was gonna look going into the fall this year. Couple of things, after the meetings that we've had the last couple of days, and the buildings have had a chance to get their meetings together and talk about how this would look, our goal would be to have five days of school as soon as possible. We don't know exactly if that's possible at the first day of school. Again, so many things are up in the air that we're not convinced. We'd like to have busing for the kids available and an option. One of the things we're gonna be doing, starting Fridays, we'll send out a parent's survey to kinda get feedback on what they think the school year should look like and what they would be willing to tolerate. We know that some parents are not interested in sending their kids to school for several varieties of reasons, and we also think there's parents out there that have a big appetite to get their kids in school as soon as possible. So we're trying to figure out what's the best option for our kids. So look for that survey, starting on Friday, and you'll have an opportunity to voice your feedback and give your concerns to the board and the district as well. But that is our goal, and that's kinda what we're looking at. One of the things we wanna do is have a virtual option, a virtual classroom option that's gonna be robust and flexible, 'cause we don't know at some point if the school's gonna close. We don't know if we're gonna be able to open on time. We don't know what that's gonna look like. So we're working very hard and diligently, and a lot of people are putting in extra time to try and make an option for our students that can't come to school for whatever reason, or don't wanna send their kids to school, to be able to have a virtual option that has some teeth in it, and is a robust option for them to be able to stay at home and still get quality education. So that's the pieces that we have in place that we're talking about and trying to put together. Again, everything is up in the air. We don't know what we'll be allowed to do, but that's our goal as of this point. Brett, I'll open it up to you, if you wanna add anything to that.
No, I think you hit the big areas, and I think it's, I think parents wanna know what their options are gonna be at this point. It's, you know, face-to-face, or there's a virtual option, and I think we wouldn't be to the place we are without the input that we're getting from the building committees, as well as our district-wide committee, and, you know, I think the board collectively has been sending articles that they read and reading stuff on their own, and it's all trying to make, so we can make the best decision possible for everybody involved.
Correct. And I think we'll remain flexible. We wanna give the parents the options. We don't wanna force them to send their kids to school, and we don't wanna force them to keep their kids at home, if they want their kids in the classroom as well. So that's what we're trying to balance, all of that, to be able to give the best options for our kids. The other, anybody have any comments on that?
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, we're doing things in a smart and thoughtful practice. We've been monitoring, not only the board level, but the staff level, the COVID-19 pandemic since January. We did launch, ramp up a pandemic working group, the administration did, and I wanna say that we do have best practices in place from a mitigation standpoint. So when we do go back to in-person classroom in the fall, we will have mitigation in place, whether that's PPE, hand sanitizer, sneeze shields, we will be doing all of that and following that. So we're gonna be doing things the right way, safety first, so.
Correct. Yeah, our goal is to be an example of what we should be doing, not an example of what not to do. So I think we have the right people in the right places. The committees are meeting weekly, and that will continue for the foreseeable future as well. So we should be able to get all these pieces in place to have a safe environment for our kids, and that's our number-one goal. The other topic of tonight was the equity and social justice initiatives. Brenda's not here. She took off, right?
Nope.
No, she's right here.
Oh, sorry.
We did have a conversation about the social justice in the, in the district, and we, first, we put together a gap analysis. What are we doing right? What do we need to improve on? And those kind of things are being worked on currently. Going forward, we're looking at having student forums, where the students actually can communicate to us and let them know what their thoughts are. And that can be, we have future students, or ex-students, graduated students, that are giving us feedback. We have a couple of groups that are interested in what we're doing, and we're gonna be communicating with those groups going forward, and also with the teachers, having staff development, professional development, to help everyone with their perspective on social equity. Our take on it is we wanna treat students as an individual, and if we treat everyone as an individual, I think we take care of a lot of the problems that are developing in society. And I think that's a good first start for us, to be able to handle it. But we need to know what we're doing currently as far as curriculum, and what we can do to improve on that, and that's our goal going forward. We wanna have multicultural perspectives in the classroom literature, and several other initiatives that'll be coming forward. And at that, I'll turn it over to Brenda, if she wants to add anything.
Okay.
Anyone else? Bob?
Yeah, I'll just mention that when this, this initiative first kicked off, I did meet with Abhi Bravasar. He's one of the leaders of this group. Had a wonderful conversation with him, and we all see things through different lenses, and I'm learning more as I further go down this, this journey. But I committed to him that, as a board, we will do what's right for all of our students and all of our kids, and if we find something that is broken, we will make sure that we fix it right away. I committed that I will be meeting on a regular basis, certainly quarterly, with the two student groups that the board recently approved, Sage and BSU, just to get that dialogue going, to make sure that I'm seeing things that I may be missing. So I thanked Abhi for providing the leadership and bringing this to our attention, so. Thank you.
I think he brings a good perspective to what we're doing, and he didn't really have any complaints about the district. He just wants to make sure that we're being thorough and complete in our study of social equity, so. Anyone else? That's all we have for Ad-Hoc Curriculum Committee this evening.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight, Building Committee. Back to you, Brian.
Again, we met earlier this evening. A couple of things, we talked about projects going on currently throughout the district. We got some updates. One of the major ones was the pool drought issue. We had expansion joints that were causing a problem with the tile cracking and buckling at the, at the pool, and it looks like we figured out the problem, and we also found the solution, and that's being currently worked on. We approved a concrete bid for MacArthur, and that is moving over to Finance Committee for final approval. One other thing of note, our Fund 41 Capital Projects List, we've kind of put on hold at this point, not knowing what our budget necessarily will look like going forward. We know that we're gonna be spending money on PPE and things to deal with the COVID crisis, so we're gonna hold off on spending any capital projects for that, and knowing that we could possibly use some of that money for PPE as well. So we're gonna hold, hold the line on the, on the budget right now, and just kinda see how things look going forward. And that's all I have.
Great. Questions, comments? All right, thank you. Moving on to item nine, New Business. A, Discussion and Action to Approve Donations. Brett?
Yep, that's just to approve the art donation of $400.
Understand a motion?
Make a motion to thank Horicon Bank for their donation and approve it.
I'll second.
Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item B, Discussion and Action to Approve Facility Use Fee Waiver Request. Brett?
Yep, so there are several, in your packet, several fee waiver requests.
Okay, I would like to, rather than lumping these all in one bucket from an approval standpoint, if we could just have discussion relative to each of the items or each of the, the groups here, and then, if that's okay, we can make a decision on each one.
Yep.
So the town of Germantown. Who's got the background on this?
I do.
Okay, Brittany.
Do you want me to just go through each one of them?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. The town of Germantown is requesting the use of Rockfield Elementary School's cafeteria and lobby for their monthly town meetings and the days for voting. They have used our facilities in the past, and the fee has been waived. It is an estimated fee of about $699.44.
Okay. Thoughts, comments from the board? Germantown has been a wonderful partner. I know during our referendum work and our construction work, taking monies out of the fund balance, they've been a wonderful partner, so.
I'll move to approve the fee waiver for the town of Germantown for the reasons stated. I'll second.
Discussion, sir?
Just curious, what days of the week would it be? You know, once-a-month meeting? Would any of those be on school days by chance?
It's the second Monday of the month. Let's see. It's a monthly meeting, and the election is what they're looking at, so it would be the second Monday of the month.
Yeah, I think elections would be during school, the school day, right?
It says, "Elections all day, 7:30 AM to 8:30 PM, August 11, 2020, November 3, 2020, and then I believe it says February. Doesn't give a specific date. In '21, April of '21, oh, dates to be determined in those months. And then the annual meeting is the 3rd Tuesday of April 2020. They believe it's April 20th.
So for the election, November 3, August is a non-issue, and I think the administration can do workaround on that one day. It'll probably be held, and the polling would be on the gym, I would presume.
The usual polling, the lobby, the doors, the area that's under the door, so we have added provisions to go to the cafeteria.
Great. All right, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Germantown Baseball and Fast Pitch Inc.
Sure. This organization is requesting the use of our high school JV and varsity fields for the baseball tournament. It is four days in September. I have the specific days, if you'd like. They have used the facilities, and the fee has been waived, and this fee is $1,265. And if you want the specific date, it is September 12th and 13th, and then September 19th and 20th.
And in the spirit of transparency, I'm a former softball dad, and I think this is a wonderful event. They're a great organizations. A lot of our kids participate, and those kids go on to athletics within our schools, so it's, it's a great event, so.
Bob, do you know, is this a for-profit group?
I don't know.
They are a nonprofit.
Yeah, I don't know.
They're a 501(c)(3), so they support children, in a sense. That's what that means. But then, we are responsible for, are they providing concessions? Do we know that?
Um, I do not know that.
Okay.
I don't think they're required to put that on the forms.
Was that-
If they provide concessions, or if they use our concessions?
I would presume that they're going to use our space, and they would certainly have concessions for the event. And I can only, again, presume, I would hope this isn't the agreement, that they're gonna leave the field and the conditions the way they received it, meaning that they're gonna pick up trash and all that kind of stuff, so.
Is there anyone in the audience that can speak to this request? No? Would've hoped they would've been here, if they're asking for a fee waiver.
I would agree. So when is this coming up again, Brittany?
This one's on September 12th and 13th, and then September 19th and 20th.
Yeah, and then my assumption is they would need the "no" right away, from a planning standpoint, to get the schedule out. And I don't think we've had any issues in past years with this event, so.
Not that I know of.
Yeah.
You're not gonna "no," nor will I. I guess as long as everything is, you know, left the way you found it, 'cause-
Yeah. They're a good organization. They're local.
Yep.
Move to approve the baseball usage as presented.
Second?
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Badgeret Palm Inc.
Sure. This organization is requesting to use the Germantown High School Field House, Locker Room, Main Gym, Cafeteria, Common Areas, and PAC for the 2021 Wisconsin Spirit Championship. This organization has not used our facilities in the past. It is for February 28th, and the fee is $4,485.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thoughts?
Do we know what age group this is?
I'm sorry?
Do we know what age group this is, and if it's local kids involved in this?
Yes, the, the people that are requesting the fee waiver are present, if they, if they can answer your questions.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience representing this one?
Yep, please come.
Good evening, welcome.
I'm Ann Caskey, and I own Badgeret. We actually have been in this facility. About 15 years ago, we hosted the event here. It will bring in probably 50 to plus teams. They are junior high and high school-aged. As I said, we hosted back 15 years ago here at Germantown. It rotates each year, a different area of high school, so- at Germantown. It rotates each year, a different area of high school, so they can benefit from the great fundraiser brought to them. And Germantown is a natural fit because they've been part of our program for 49 years. And along with the high school team, they have an incredible, you have an incredible rec program that has four or five teams that attend as well, so.
So, how many, you mentioned teams, how many kids, do you think?
800 to 1,000 kids.
Holy cow.
So, it's a huge fundraiser for not only the high school team here, but the rec department in Germantown.
Okay. Thank you.
Can, oh, real quick, sorry. Can you explain to me how the fundraising works?
They get half of the door that's brought in, so the general admission, and then they run all of the concessions. So, they get everything throughout the event, and teams typically make $8,000 minimum, depending on how big the event is and if it even will happen.
And I'm assuming there's a fee to participate in the event?
Yes.
And what is that fee?
It's minimal. It's like $15 a kid.
A kid? Okay.
So, our rec department runs cheer programs and collects revenue for running cheer programs, then?
I can't, I don't really understand your question. The Germantown Palm is part of your rec department. It's a Palm and Dance program, and so they just have a big presence, and they work with the high school, the war chicks, pretty closely. So, with the arsenal of people they have, it would be a great fit, and obviously, your beautiful facility.
But this is all, the monies will go back to all Germantown kids and families, correct?
Correct.
Got it. And then presuming the, what you call them, the Germantown Palms?
The war chicks.
The rec department program?
Yeah.
They would, I guess, have to figure out how, or you would figure out how you would want to split between the high school and what the rec department
Right.
would get. Typically, other schools that have done it, we've been at Brookfield East for probably the last five years, they've split it based on how many parent volunteers they have per age group team, so the high school versus the younger kids.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I've got one question before you walk away. Sorry. The reason some of these fees are put into place is to cover, to have the lights on, to have maybe air conditioning or heating, to have custodial come through after you're done and clean it.
Correct.
Why should all the taxpayers of the Germantown School District pay for those items for this group?
I didn't ask for that technically. Typically, we get a percentage off because it's a fundraiser for the team that hosts it. So, I had no idea what fees were. I'm just, I just asked to come and explain what our partnership would be with Germantown and how it would benefit Germantown.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. I thought I heard PAC use in there. Okay, that, we have to make sure works, because Heather, who is the PAC guru, wants to make sure, like, the dates and everything. So, before we can approve that, we would, we would need to check those dates with her calendar.
And I have another question. Yours is stuck here all night, so I apologize.
That's okay.
But this, your company's for-profit, correct?
Yes.
Okay. To Mr. Barney's point, we, and you should have been here earlier when we were talking about potentially $1.8 million in COVID-19, PPE, and other costs for the upcoming school year, because we're going to have in-classroom school. It's a very challenging budget year for us, and we're looking at, truly looking at every nickel and dime. Does this have to be decided tonight? Because I would like to get further conversation to cover, possibly cover some of the costs, certainly our labor for custodial.
Hundred percent, and that's, that's what we've had at other schools.
Okay.
So, in no way, again, I had no idea the amount. The big thing for us is the date.
Right.
Is the date available.
And then maybe that could, we could identify with Heather on this venue, if that's even available for
Absolutely.
February 28.
Understood completely.
Another quick question. You said, mentioned Brookfield Central. Did they waive the fees for you?
Brookfield East.
Of Brookfield East?
We paid for their custodian.
Okay.
Great. Brittany?
And I just want to clarify, because, so I've received these from our Buildings and Grounds Department, and if we weren't on the same page, that I apologize. So, there was a fee waiver filled out, and so I assume they thought that they wanted the fee waived. If there was some agreement in the past where you would pay a portion of it, I just, that, I just didn't know that on our side.
It's what every, every school district is different.
Okay.
So, you obviously have a beautiful, incredible, brand-new facility that most schools do not have the benefit of having. So, I was told to fill that out.
Okay.
And told to come and just answer any questions you had. So, certainly, I'm not...
We can, we can follow up with it. I didn't, again, I don't know if the complete fee was, I don't know the conversation you had, so I don't know if you were asking for the entire fee to be waived. That's why I have the paper in front of me. And if there was a different conversation, maybe you and I can touch base, so we are on the same page.
Sure.
So, I don't believe that, other than the PAC, I believe that if it's brought this far, that the facility is open on the February 28 date. So, I don't think that's a concern. I think it was more of the, if the fees are going to be waived, it needs to come to the full board for approval.
Completely, completely.
Sorry, if approved, it's constantly waiver, that's the thing for us. Oh, I can find it, but there's basically, then, if the waiver, if the board or two over, and then, it's 20 minutes. So, when you have to worry about if the fee waived or not, does not, then, ask me to do this?
Got it. Yeah, I think based on the conversations tonight, we'll put a pause on this right now, and then we'll commit to put this on the next board agenda. And I think, I would ask that you work with staff in terms of what the appropriate fee is.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a wonderful event. I think it'd be neat having all those kids here and showcasing our beautiful facilities, so.
Right. And again, I was just following what I was told to do.
That's fine, cool.
Thank you for being here and answering the questions.
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to PTA.
Sure. PTA, the district's PTA organizations are asking to hold their monthly meetings at various locations, depending on where their PTA is located. They're asking for a two-year waiver, so the school year that we're in, 2021, and then next school year, 2122. Obviously, this organization has used our facilities, and the fees have been waived in the past. The total is $691.88.
Thank you.
Move to approve the fee waiver for the PTAs.
Second.
Second. Amanda? Discussion. I'll just add that, I think this is great. PTAs are our partners in this. PTAs contribute so much to the Germantown School District, to making us successful, and I know, Jane, we calculate this on an annual basis. I think we need to start doing that again. The organization, the moms and dads that are part of the PTA, they literally donate thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to the Germantown School District, and they're rock stars. So, I think this is great that we're doing this.
Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Wisconsin Test Prep.
This organization is requesting to use the Germantown High School classroom to hold test prep class and tests on testing days. The organization has used the high school in the past without fees. It is not specific days. They are asking for a range between October of 2020 and June of 2021. The fee is $468.75.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve Wisconsin Test Prep for use of our facilities.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none?
Just curious, is Test Prep a for-profit company? It is. Okay, just curious.
Further comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to item C, discussion and action to approve new district policy.
Yes, thank you. The, this is not necessarily a new policy, this are amendments to current policies, and this came out of the civil rights audit that happened in January. And there's two, two different actions. One policy, number 2421, to include the protected class sex rather than gender, so there's a couple's locations, it's just switching the word. And then the second one is, the audit also revealed that Mr. Nowak and Mrs. O'Brien were listed in one policy, and Mr. Holmes and Mrs. O'Brien listed in another policy. And all we're looking for is, of the corrective action is to change policy 2260 to be consistent with all their policies, and add the email address of the listed individuals, which would be Mr. Nowak and Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended changes to policy 2421 and 2260 for the reasons stated.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to item D, discussion and action to approve Sunbelt Services Agreement.
Yes, that, Mr. Blam will present that.
Thank you. At the last meeting, we talked about renewing the agreement with Sunbelt for student-specific IEP nursing services, which is a hard-to-fill position for us. The question came up as to what may happen. If school were to go into closure and we would not need those services, would we be obligated to continue to pay for them? In my correspondence with Sunbelt, although there was a possibility that the language could be changed, there'd probably be other language changes that would need to be made, and furthermore, there'd be a greater possibility that we'd lose the person that we have already serving that need for us. And so, in addition to the services that are provided, intended to be provided for the current match that we have, if there were a situation where we wouldn't need the services for their intended purpose at this time, we could redesignate those services to support our nurse and health room aid staff throughout the district. So, there is a little more reassurance to us in that regard, that if, if something were to happen, that we wouldn't need the services for the intended purpose, that we could certainly continue to use those services.
I have a question, Tom.
Yeah.
So, then, if her services were to be redirected to, say, health room or something else, then the funding source would, it would fall into a different funding bucket then, correct? Because isn't this federal dollars supported for the nursing services specific to a student IEP or need in comparison to the health room?
That is, that is likely true.
And so, does anyone know what bucket that'll be?
Yeah, I think Brittany just stepped out. I know, Tom, I don't know, we'll have to get clarification on that. Tom, I know you had some concern over this.
Yeah, that was my original concern, that if we did go into a, you know, lockdown, I guess, like we had last school year, then we would be on the hook for those services even if they weren't being provided, which, it sounds like there's a compromise, that it could be redirected and provided, you know, provide alternate services, but to Mrs. Larson's point, who would then pay for them?
But is there a way to provide these services? I'm sorry for interrupting, but is there a way to provide these services at home during that time, as that student would typically be in school?
There may be that need. It's really difficult to predict with certainty what those needs may be, but there is, there is a possibility that they would be needed and provided at home.
I know during the ad hoc committee meeting, Brian, you mentioned that there may be a need to flex up on nursing staff if this goes further down the path. Is that accurate?
Correct. So, we might be flexing those dollars into that anyway, but I guess the concern would be is if someone was not in school, we now, nobody may be in school, so we wouldn't need the extra nurse help.
Correct.
That's the only concern I have.
Right.
I guess my thought is, we're paying on an hourly rate. If we're not billing any hours, do we really have to pay? I'm not sure how...
Is there a minimum threshold?
We do. If you read the contract that was in there, that it's, it's for the school year.
But my question is...
So, it's already like a prepaid amount, or a number of hours?
Right, yes.
Regardless of, if school closes, IEP still need to be met, correct?
Correct, correct.
So, if this is stated in the IEP, then we need to make sure we're still providing those services for that student?
And I want to be completely transparent, as we all do, without, you know, being respectful of confidentiality here as well. The needs at home are different than the needs at school. And so, while there's a chance that there may be need at home, and that the services could be provided at home, the need is not
As great?
As obligated, perhaps, as when we're in school, in session, in person.
I just want to make sure that our students are taken care of, so.
And I think the concern also was that if we don't go down this path, we risk losing someone, because that person will know, I don't even know who this person is, but that person will know that, of the unknown, that if there is a, if we can go back into shelter in place, there's a spike in COVID, that type of thing, that person may not want to participate and go forward with the Germantown School District in addition to supporting our student. Is that accurate?
Correct. Yeah, this person could pursue other options if there's not that reassurance that there's...
And that this person has a good relationship with the student, correct?
Correct, yeah, correct. There's orientation involved. There's, obviously, relationship is at the heart of success of this.
So, if the student doesn't come to school next year or chooses not to for safety reasons, would we be on the hook for paying this contract?
We would be if we proceed with it.
So, then, then we would...
Well, because in looking at the language here, it says, "Minimum weekly hours, 40 weekly hours are based on service date according to published school calendar." So, from starting September 1st through June 10th, we would be obligated to pay 40 hours a week at $60.50 an hour.
Yeah, you know, I'm certainly not a subject matter expert in this, but I think I would, if I was a mom or dad, I think I would be concerned that I'm losing someone that I put a lot of trust and faith in. And the concern would be that, what is going on with my mom right now, she's getting home healthcare, and it's a revolving door in terms of the person that she's getting to take care of her 24/7, and that's not fair to my mom. You know, I'm sorry for bringing, you know, a person into this, my mom into this, but I just wouldn't want that for our student to have somebody to come in and have a revolving door with a new person. I guess, I wouldn't support that, so.
And I appreciate that. It's a hard-to-fill position, which is why we've found ourselves using the services of Sunbelt in order to do so.
And I understand the concern over dollars, dollars that we desperately need in our budget, but I guess it could be an insurance policy. I don't know. Don't know.
I think when it comes to money and spending on our kids, we all agree. We'll spend whatever we can to make sure they're happy and taken care of.
I mean, that's the upside. The downside is, if we don't go down this path, then we sell Sunbelt, I'm sure they're going to try their darndest to backfill this position, and they're going to get somebody in there that, okay, I've got a job today, but I may not have a job tomorrow, that type of thing. So, will that person be less likely for coming on board? I don't know. So, I don't think I'd want to take that risk for our kids, so. Understanding the budget implications is great. I get that, I understand. Mike, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, as you were speaking, I was thinking, these are conversations a year ago we never would have, like, imagined having. I mean, maybe we would have thought it was a possibility, but it's kind of the new reality to raise these kinds of questions. So, I get it. I think it may come up with our next agenda item as well. You know, we see this in some other areas. I see sort of the similar themes in other places. I'm bringing them up, but, you know, I think you're on, we're paying for quality of service, and that's at the forefront, as far as I can tell.
Got it. Thoughts? Any other thoughts? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the client assignment confirmation with Sunbelt staffing for a registered nurse during the 2020-2021 school year at a rate of $60. staffing for a registered nurse during the 2020-2021 school year at a rate of $60.50 per hour for the services needed.
I will second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to Item E, Discussion and Action to Approve Physical Therapy Services for 2020-21.
Thank you. Mr. Nowak will address this.
Thank you. Last year, we looked at physical therapy services in the district, and we discussed them relative to independent contractor status. I think it was literally right around this time, we committed to Dominique's Therapy Associates as our provider, entered into a contract with them that was multi-year. The main thing there was analysis from a legal perspective, using state guidelines as to whether or not they were deemed to be an independent contractor, or if they should be considered as an employee of the district. Dominique Therapy Associates clearly met those standards, and they continue to, as we sit today. So our recommendation is to continue on. It's not something that needs approval, but it is something that we said we would address. I'll let Todd speak to anything else that he sees fit right now.
I think that pretty much covers it, truly.
So this is more informational only?
Correct.
Okay. Comments, questions? Okay. Moving on to Item F, Discussion and Action to Approve Teacher Contracts.
Thank you. We'll have Mr. Nowak speak to that as well.
Thank you. We bring forward four teacher contract requests. First is Julia Culver, an English teacher at Germantown High School. She's recommended for this position as a result of a teacher resignation. Julia was with us at the end of this past year in a limited-term role, and this would be stepping into actually another role, be a regular contract at $52,000. Next is Joey Balls, a special education teacher at Amy Bell Elementary. She is being recommended for this position as a result of a teacher requirement. This is a 1.0 regular contract at $41,250. Courtney Peterson, a special education teacher at Rockfield Elementary. Courtney is being recommended for this position as a result of teacher retirement, a 1.0 regular contract at $45,000. And finally, Heather Yonkey, seventh-grade math teacher at Kennedy Middle School. Heather is being recommended for this position as the result of a recent resignation. It's a regular 1.0 contract for $60,000. We ask that you approve the noted contract requests at this time.
Thank you.
I move to approve the contracts as presented for the stated amounts in FTE.
I will second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to Item G, Discussion and Action to Approve Resignations.
And Mr. Nowak will address that as well.
Thank you. Jennifer Collins recently submitted her letter of resignation. Jennifer Collins was hired in August of 2015 in the Germantown School District as an art teacher at Rockfield Elementary. Her resignation is effective June 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resignation of Jennifer Collins and thank her for her services to the students, their families, and to the Germantown School District, and to approve posting and filing the vacancy.
I will second.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item H, Discussion and Action to Approve Supplemental Contracts.
And we'll go back to Mike.
Thank you. At our last board meeting, we had a list of supplemental teacher contract requests for 2021. We have one addition to that list, Heidi Foit, structural specialist at Kennedy, seeking no more than 80 hours at a rate of $50.57 an hour for not more than a total of $4,045.60.
I move to approve the 2021 supplemental teacher contract for Heidi Foit.
I will second.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We're now on Item 10, closed session. The Board of Education will entertain a motion to convene in closed session for 22 Sections 1985, 1D, E, and/or G, Wisconsin statutes as appropriate, to consider safety issues, procedures, and strategies for public assembly, and to confer with legal counsel regarding possible related legal action. The Board may take action in closed session. Following the closed session, the Board will entertain a motion to reconvene into open session. Thereafter, the Board will take any further action that is necessary and appropriate, and will then entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to go into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Ryan?